I'd like to call this special board meeting to order. Roll call. We need to elect treasurer pro tem.
Nominate Mr. Williams.
Support motion.
No, it's a treasurer. Did she say treasurer?
Treasurer pro tem.
Yeah, Mr. Williams.
I think Mitch should do it, but yes, sure.
You want to do it Mitch?
I'll support Mr. Williams.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Williams.
Roll call. Okay, so we'll do roll call now. Mr. Sturtevant.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, here.
Pledge of allegiance.
Superintendent Mr. Tucker, Board President Mr. Damacchia, and Board members. Tonight we have a student. We have eighth grade student for Jim Johnny Wilson Middle School who will lead the pledge of allegiance. Margenay Noble is a student. Margenay Noble is the daughter of Raymond and Chris Lee Wanamaker. Margenay loves track, bowling, cheerleading, and reading interesting stories. After graduation, she plans on joining the Air Force. We'll excuse that for a minute though. The Air Force, hopefully not the Army, so she should join the Army. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Army guy, so we'll lead her in the right direction later. After the pledge, Margenay will be reading a poem in honor of Black History Month. Mr. Michael Scott, Principal at General Johnny Wilson Middle School, is here tonight to support his student. Also, Ms. Chappelle Nettles is here as well. Margenay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you see it?
Aspirations. In our perfect world, there will be no need to express all that is best about me, about us, trust. We are a nation of amazing. We are people excelling to the highest heights our dreams take flight. So stay alert, remain awake, live as I state. Reality makes the mind quake. Remember, during a summit escape, Winston Hughes wrote, Sojourner, who spoke, Elizabeth Coletis, Wordsman, Benjamin Banneker, Palmer, Sylvia, scientists, Almette Oxford, George Washington Carver, Watsonis and Eventin. And these are several my mentors, so when you ask who I aspire to be, it's all lies within me. Moments and memories linger within my DNA, give birth to a masterpiece. Miss, I pray amen.
We also have Mr. Scott and Mr. Hillco as well from General Johnny Wilson Middle School to do another presentation as well.
Board members, thank you for this opportunity. I won't take too much of your time, but Margenay Noble is a very special student to my heart. She's come a long way during her years at GJW, and that smile that she has on her face brightens my day every single day. But I also have to talk about a mentor in her life, and not only a mentor in her life, but a mentor in the lives of many students at GJW, Ms. Nettles. And Ms. Nettles made a request for me in the summer. We gave out student schedules, and she didn't see Margenay Noble on her case load. And she said to me, "I need her, I want her on my list." And I watched the relationship between these two over the course of this year, and it is so empowering. We talk oftentimes about positive relationships and the power behind that, and I truly believe Margenay has made a choice to be a positive student, and Ms. Nettles made a choice to help her along that journey. So these two wonderful young ladies exemplify all the excellence that not only is represented during Black History Month, but is represented through our building the whole school year. So we do have a special presentation, Mr. Hillco, at this time. Ms. Nettles, will you please come up? And Ms. Margenay, will you please come up? And can we give them a round of applause when they come up too? Because they are setting the example for relationships between teachers and students, and this is exemplified across our district, is magnified by these two wonderful young ladies. So we have a special presentation, and Mr. Hillco is presenting it with a little token of appreciation for all their hard work this school year.
Margenay, would like to give you a certificate as well from the board. Time our Superintendent Mr. Tucker as well.
Thank you.
For our sport, we'd like to also take a picture with you two up the board.
I would like to invite Mrs. Martha Smith to give the yearly report of our bond oversight committee.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Since its inception in 2002, the mission statement of the Bond Issue Oversight Committee, BIOC, has been to review and monitor the expenditure and fund of funds raised from the bond issue for the design, engineering, construction, and renovation of school facilities. To report the committee's findings to the board and the community on a regular basis and with a formal written report to the board at least once a year that summarizes the previous year's activities. Superintendent Tucker, President Damacchia, Board members, it's my pleasure this evening to be here to give this annual report. During the calendar year 2014, the Bond Issue Oversight Committee, consisting of Martha Smith Chair, Don Killinger Co-Chair, Dorothy Anderson, Bob Balog, Eddie Edwards, Martha Pye, Ron Mantini, and Raul Ramos, met four times to review the investment returns and the progress of construction or demolition of the projects underway during this period. The minutes of the meetings are attached for your review should you desire further detail. There were two demolition projects completed in 2014. Lakeview Elementary was demolished and is in the closeout process with costs pending at $244,168. Masson was completed as well and is also in the closeout process with costs pending at $554,734. The remaining demolition projects are Lowell and Southview High School. The last new construction project to be completed is, as you know, the new Lorraine High School. The project was advertised for bid in 2014 and was a very successful bidding event coming in under budget. There are two remaining pieces to be bid out for the technology for the building and the furnishings. The high school project is currently under construction, and we encourage you to drive by and see how amazing it already appears. It is fantastic to drive by there and see that building is magnificent already. One is for the storage and restoration of the auditorium seating, I'm sorry. There are three LFIs for the new high school. One is for the storage and restoration of the auditorium seating in the amount of $132,283.75, and one for the additional academic space, and one for the auditorium, which will cost a total of $8,137,794.85, according to the post bid review. The LFI, the local funded initiative, costs continue to be approved. It is anticipated that the cost for the new high school project will be approximately $74 million, including the LFIs, and the spent to date amount on the project is currently pending at $20,592,572. Interest earnings on the project have generated a total of $10,571,047 through the end of December 2014, and these funds can be utilized to cover any overages that will also be used for our locally funded initiative projects. The average investment maturity reported in December by LCS Finance Department is 32 days with a .23% return rate on funds deposited in liquid cash accounts. As you know, the interest rates on CDs continue to run low, and Mr. Weber has worked diligently with the investment managers on the investments of local funds to make sure a maximum return is realized. The fee for the investment manager is paid from the interest earnings. Attached to your report is a brief summary of the investment activities provided by the Treasurer, Dale Weber, and prepared by Productive Capital Management, a division of Meter Investment Management. If you have any questions, please email him or see him for questions regarding that report from the investment management company. The Lorraine City Schools Building Project Finance Financial Summary as of December 31st, 2014. Interest, state, $1,288,057, and local, $9,282,990, for a total of $10,571,047. Of that total, $5,071,969 has been transferred into LFI Fund 004. Expenditures, $156,896,753, with a balance in reserve of $51,660,331. These figures represent a timeframe from January 2002 to December 31st of 2014, and include costs for contractors, construction managers, former and present, and architects. Costs are now paid from the remaining state share of funds, and we are now beginning to expend funds from the local share of funds as well. The Treasurer is meeting with the Facilities Department each month to ladder the investments so that cash flow is available for the LFIs and construction expenditures as we move toward liquidity and use of the local share funds. 2014 BIOC Recommendations to the Board of Education. The District continues to do an exemplary job in managing the construction funds, working closely with the construction manager on the expenditures. However, as the project has entered its final phase, the Board is encouraged to continue to closely manage the remaining funds to ensure that the remaining demolitions and construction of the new high school are completed within budget. With that said, this committee fully endorses the Treasurer, let the Treasurer evaluate the continued use of the investment manager and to revise their contract accordingly as investments wane. The committee also feels it important to reiterate to the general public about the use of designated bond issued funds as it relates to the building project. The committee wishes to remind the public that the funds approved by the voters for this building project cannot be used for operating expenditures for the new buildings. The use of the funds is very specific and can only be used to construct or demolish those buildings that are part of this OSFC OFCC project. Part of the committee's duties is to ensure that the funds are used only for this purpose and not for operating costs or any other costs generally covered by the District's General Fund. The Committee's Conclusions for 2012. The Committee is pleased to report that the project still remains in good financial condition given the number of buildings constructed and demolitions completed to date. This committee is also pleased to report that expenditures continue to be appropriately made and investments monitored until such time as the funds cannot be invested due to use on the project for paying construction costs. Please be aware that we are now using local share funds and the interest earnings as we move through the construction phase of the new high school and the LFIs as previously noted. Therefore, less interest earnings are being realized and will soon cease to accrue as we use the local share toward the expenditures and the interest earnings on the additional academic space and auditorium. The Committee would like to again highly commend Jeff Hawkes and Maggie Carter for their continued assistance in coordinating our activities during the year. Their continued dedication and enthusiasm toward the creation of a new and exciting environment for the current and future students of the Lorraine City School Districts through oversight of the construction projects, financial tracking, and the initiatives shown in packaging projects for more competitive bids is gratefully acknowledged. The school system is extremely fortunate to have such dedicated and committed employees. On behalf of the BIOC, I would like to thank the Board for the continued opportunity to provide input and recommendations on this exciting project for the benefit of the students of the Lorraine City Schools. Respectful city.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We appreciate all the work that you, the time that you put in.
Jeff, if I might just interject this. The only reason we were able to accumulate $9 million in interest is because the state, on their own, and I don't remember what year that was, but 10 years or so ago, agreed that rather than to split costs as originally planned by 81% state, 19% district, they agreed to spend 100% of their money until that money was exhausted, which is now, as Martha pointed out, happening. But if for those years the state had not shouldered the 100% of the cost, we would not have had the money available for long-term investment, and we would not be looking at the LFIs if it became so important in the increased academic space, the auditorium, the seating. And for that, I mean, this shows that I think our partnership with the state, although it's had a couple bumps in the road as every partnership does, has turned out way over on our side. And I thank the citizens who passed the levy in 2001, and just without that, none of this would have happened. Not all districts, if I'm correct, that were given this opportunity did their voters come up with the local money needed. We did, and as Martha said, just drive by the high school, it is fantastic folks. It is fantastic. Thank you.
Jeff, I just have a comment. I want to thank Martha and your committee for a very, very comprehensive financial report and all your hard work and your recommendations to the Board. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Sam Felton of the Lorraine Veterans Council for civic improvement to come to the podium. I would like to do that because we have a great crowd here tonight that follows you up here, Sam, and we appreciate that. What they have done for our new high school, if you would take a look there below, the Titan College, they have voted amongst their members, and they have donated a Draper flag. And for those who don't know what the Draper flag is, it's 18 by 24 feet. This flag is large, it's electric, and that simulates there about where we're going to put it. We're going to put it in the gym as right above one of the entrances into the gym, and when we go to say the pledge, it will come down. And that is just an awesome, awesome donation from them. And so on behalf of Lorraine City Schools, on behalf of the Board and Sam, we want to thank you, and we will have it in there very proudly. Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't even need this, do I really? What a wonderful experience to be a part of, Lorraine Vets Council for Civic Improvement, and humbly, I have to say, I'm the president, that so many veterans groups came together when we came up with the idea for this flag. And I'd just like to acknowledge Ms. Diane Turner from Daughters of the American Revolution, Ernest Battle from the DAV, and NAV Vets Chapter 74, Jose Torres from VFW 451, certainly Steve Smith, Beverly Gale, and my man Arthur, and Ray Kershaw from DAV 20. They're both from Jewish war veterans. And I mean, we're all concerned citizens, but we're also patriots and veterans as well. And we only felt it fitting that we would do this for our community. And I'd like Steve to come up here for just a minute, if you would please, because when we came up with this idea, the money was, the money was an issue, but it wasn't really a major issue. So Steve took the bull by the horns and donated his own money until the Vets Council was going to pay him a reimbursement for this. So the reason this flag is actually up there is because of this gentleman here. Okay, Steve?
Actually, the only thing I did was order it. It came up at a meeting, we decided through the Vets Council that we would donate a flag to the high school, for the new high school. At that time, we didn't know if it was acceptable without having brought it to a board meeting, and that was right around Christmas. Actually, our meeting was toward the end of December, and I emailed Superintendent Tucker, and he was out over the Christmas holiday, and the first January, I got an email from him that I would be in touch with Jeff Hawkes. And so I called him and I said, you know, we'd like to donate a flag, and we thought we were going to have a year or so to fund this thing. And that's it. And he said, well, that'd be nice. I said, we're going to present it at a board meeting for approval, and he said, no, it's already accepted. And I said, well, what are you going to need? And he said, we need it now. I said, well, then we'll get it handled. So I ordered the flag. And then I went back to the council, and I said, if you want to reimburse me for the funds, I would appreciate it. It's paid for, so.
And that's in our warehouse. It's already a reason that we need it now because there's a lot of our, and you'll see more and more discussions, I don't want to take TDA's thunder away, but our gym is just about, it is done, it's getting ready to be painted, and we had to find the location, the proper location to work with electricians and everything, so, no, and that's why. We appreciate it extremely. We're ecstatic about it.
That's great. Well, we're proud to be able to offer it to the school system and the Vets Council and all our fellow veterans here, and those that aren't here, they're all part of it too. Thank a veteran.
If we could, again, let me just say thank you guys very much for making this high school even more special than it already is. We certainly appreciate the wonderful donation, but we would also like to take the time, if you guys, the veterans in the room, stand up and just recognize yourself by name and do a little recognition as well. Ernest Battle, Post 74, NAV Vets.
Jose Torres, Post Commander, VFW 451.
Diane Turner, Lorraine's Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Steve Smith, Commander, Post 222, Jewish War Veterans.
Beverly Gale, Senior Commander, Jewish War Veterans, Post 222.
Art Goodman, Class of 1944.
I'm Sam Felton, I'm the Commander of DAV Chapter 20, I'm the Commander of NAV Vets Chapter 74, and I'm also the incoming Vets Council President for Civic Improvement.
I'm Ray Kershaw with the Sable American Veterans Chapter 20, I'm the Adjutant Secretary and also found member of NAV Vets.
I think there's two more. Where's Dr. Hall at?
Dr. Hall?
You're not exempt.
No, I dig. Engineer for our engineers, work for Lorraine City Schools, E7.
And I think there's one more, Richard W. Damacchia, hiding back there.
Representative Antigua Rare, Commander, Post Number 1.
Again, thank you all for your wonderful service to this country, and again, for the great donation to Lorraine City Schools to make this high school project even more special than it already is. Thank you very much.
At this time, I would like to call Dana Stritzy, Vice President of Operations with Hammond Construction, to give you an update on our building project.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkes. It's a pleasure for me to be here. And little wonder why I'm excited to be in Lorraine. The high school has been an effort, a community, so it's been a pleasure to be part of that, and finally putting the icing on the cake with the high school. So to give you a real quick update on where we are with the high school, there's three buildings that make up the entire complex. Building A is what you see out there now, Building B is in the middle, and Building C is the most southern building. So Building A is completely enclosed, and currently, we're inside starting the finishes. We're painting, we're getting it prepped for your selection tonight for the finishes, which will be presented by TDA, will allow us to move forward with painting the walls, getting the flooring ordered, and starting the finishes of the building through the winter and then on into the spring and summer. And that building, A, should be complete or nearly complete by fall this year. So Building A is enclosed, we are ahead of schedule. We only anticipated getting half that building enclosed, the entire building's enclosed this winter. And the steel is being erected as we speak, well, they went home today, but they did work today in erecting steel on Building B, so, today. So we anticipate having Building B enclosed summer or early fall, and then Building C will also be enclosed by fall to complete those through this time next year, so that by August of 16th, the entire complex is complete. So construction in and of itself is going smoothly. Like Martha said, we have two packages left to bid, which are the furniture and technology. And so those will be bid late this year in an attempt to get those contractors on board next winter at this time for installation and completion of those two pieces. So the construction is going well. Despite the weather that we've had, we've been able to, the purpose for getting them enclosed is so that contractors can work through the winter. We accomplished that, that continues, despite the weather we had, we're still working outside. So that was always the goal, was to try to get to the point where we could erect steel, steel can take place, obviously, in more climate weather than May street. So that is continuing through Building B. So construction is going well. And as Martha has spoke, the budget is going very well also. As a district-wide, the management, the management, we've been managing the construction dollars and district-wide, we're under budget, and then specifically, the high school is on budget to complete, and we remain with And we remain with plenty of contingency to handle any unknowns. And we manage that contingency with the hard work of the district, Mr. Hawks, and the state, and the design team. We've worked to be able to incorporate and use some of that money to enhance what was already bid through the base bid. We've put better lights in the gymnasium, we were able to spend money there, we were able to upgrade the technology. So as we go through the building and as less risk has an opportunity to arise, we will try to shift those dollars from contingency to actual bricks and sticks to whatever we have. Keeping in mind that we too have two more packages to go out, we want to make sure we have enough money for those. So the building, construction-wise and budget-wise, remains in very good, healthy condition. So we will continue on, and I will be back at any time you would like to report. And certainly, as today, Mr. Hawks brought some people through, be more than happy to, on intermittent periods, take some groups through to see what was going out there. It's very exciting. So that's all I have. And I appreciate the interest. Any questions?
No questions, I just comment, you know, Mr. Sturgill and myself had the opportunity of going through the building today, and it's absolutely amazing, the progress that these guys have made. And, you know, as you stand there and you're standing inside, it was kind of warm inside, not to lie. You're watching these guys up on these, you know, putting that steel up in that fourteen below weather, it's certainly something that you appreciate, all their hard work and everything that all the labor organizations and the workers on this project have done. Because if you ever get an opportunity to walk through it, it's a special building, it really is, and it's actually fun to see it happening, you know, and the progress has just been amazing from this last visit to the time before. So just an amazing job, and I can't thank you guys enough for the smooth project that it's been so far and keeping us, for the most part, on time and under or near budget. So, thank you.
I don't think most people realize, just a plumbing in a facility like that, I don't, I don't think you can imagine, unless you went and seen it, I don't think anybody can imagine, but you really have to commend the people who are actually doing the work. They have come so far, because, I mean, when it was just a field, I was waiting, and I mean, I was just waiting for it to come, waiting for it to come. And now it's getting done and in such grand fashion, it's just, it's, you know, it's just awesome.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to be here. And if anything comes off-scheduled through Mr. Hawks, it'll come to the building, we'll be more than happy to be here.
I do think that's a great idea, taking different groups through to see it. I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but I get excited when I go by there, I really, really do.
Be more than happy to do it. Again, schedule with Mr. Hawks, as you know, it's a little treacherous out there right now, due to and from the buildings, a little icy. As soon as the weather dries up, Building A will be further along, yeah, we'd be happy to schedule some tours.
Yeah, maybe spring or something, the footing's better.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Or not, and you're anybody.
I think Carol and Dave are still scraping them off their shoes. I am pleased to invite TDA staff, Ed Shearson, Mike, and Lindsay, if they would. At this time, they're going to give you, show you some samples of the different types of materials, the colors, and that they have done. Ed and Mike are, and along with Jeff, were the brainchild in a lot of the design. So that gives you that. And Lindsay, of course, she is always the, she is the decorator, so don't let those guys fool you. It's all Lindsay here. Okay, Ed, you guys, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Steph. Hello, everyone. Appreciate being here, we're very happy to be here and thankful to be here. This is a very important project to you and the community, and it's very important to us also. So we're very keen to make sure that this project goes off well. Continually striving to make it do just that. So again, thanks for having us here, and thanks for allowing us to show you what we've come up with for the interior finishes for the project, color selections, carpet paint, all kinds of things like that. And that's what we're here to do tonight, is to show you that. And a couple of things to keep in mind, there were some alternates that were selected during the bid period. You know, there was some room in the budget to upgrade some finishes here and there. So one of those was to have rubber treads and risers in stair towers, that was alternate seven. There was an alternate for carpet, which was selected to put carpet in all the classrooms. And then there were two alternates related to polished concrete floor, which grounded polished concrete floor kind of gives you the look of terrazzo in Building A in the current scheme. So that's, and then in the, in B and C, there's also polished concrete, it's a lesser grind, so it won't look like terrazzo, but it's, you know, it's a similar product. And one of the ideas of the concrete is its lower maintenance. So anyways, I just wanted to mention some of the alternates that are in the project, and you'll see, you know, some of the actual samples for those as we go along. You'll also see the auditorium seating, that was very important for this, to have the established seating from the old school. That's in the presentation, and that really drove the auditorium design, the color selections, and you'll see that in the renderings for that. And the flyboy system, we managed to slip that in the room into the gym, so you'll see its location in the renderings, nicely built there by the veterans. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, who's gonna, Mike, you probably recognize from early on, the design process instrumental in coming up with the design for the building and back now to, you know, complete the finishes. And then we have Lindsay, Interior Designer, also on the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Ed, and I'm going to shift the page over towards the screen. Actually, see if it's, oh, it's working, okay, great, I won't, I won't take it. Dana mentioned, I think giving his report on the building, from him, the building, as you know, is quite large. And so a big part of the design was to figure out how we could divide, and I guess, back up a second, we just wanted to give you a kind of overview of the exterior of the building and overall layout, as a means to kind of bring you through and then start talking about the specific spaces. So as Dana mentioned, Building A is comprised of, at the east face, the administration, and above is the media center, the main gymnasium, and the auxiliary gymnasium, all the gym spaces and athletics supporting that, and the student dining to the west. Building B is the blue piece there, that is all classrooms, as well as credit recovery to the west, and the art classrooms to the east. And then Building C, which has the auditorium to the west, includes music space, construction, part of the career tech classrooms, as well as then the partnership with the Learning Community College, known as Titan College, that is all a part of Building C there. So from a design perspective on the exterior, our goal was, knowing how big it was, you know, over two hundred thousand square feet, to develop a material palette for the exterior and really drive, driven by mostly school colors in terms of thinking about, you know, the blues and the grays and the whites, and how we can bring those in, in particular, the Lorraine blue, to how much, you know, can we work that into the exterior. So on Building A, and that will be at the media center on the second floor, you'll see this blue metal panel. We have at the gym, you can see now, it's already installed, is a gray precast panel. By the student dining, you'll have this white metal panel. Some, what is like a buff, excuse me, sorry, my hand's a little shaky here, but the yellow buff brick, and then, like I said, the white panel with some clear glass, that'll be the student dining. Working down into Building B, a similar language and palette, grays and blues. These windows here are at the classrooms, and you'll see that once we get there on the interior, how we're trying to incorporate the different class colors, you know, in terms of, again, the blues and the grays. And then some darker grays in Building B for metal panel recesses and mechanical areas. And then down in Building C, we have, again, precast, a similar palette to the student dining, and then a series of some darker gray accents with some split face masonry and so on. So that was the kind of exterior language of the building, as a means to kind of break it apart and really to break down the big masses of the volumes, because there's a lot of these spaces. So on the exterior, we're looking at, you know, how do we create distinct identities for the, you know, volumes? But on the interior, we're thinking, you know, when you walk into this building, we all want it to feel like a, or a cohesive whole. And in order to do that, you know, what, the question to us is, how do we create a unified identity? So on the exterior, a big influence, and you can see that in the precast panels, we are looking at the ship mass in the harbor. And so the angles on the precast panels reference, you know, the ships in the harbor. So on the interior, then the question is, what is the image that we could use, you know, local iconography to inspire the interiors? And actually using the, we looked at the logo, or just through searching actually Lorraine, you know, the images, we found that an inspiration with us was the lighthouse and as a part of the logo. And so we have an image out here, a primary, you know, quick Google search, I mean, that's one of the primary images that comes up here. And so our thought was, in looking at that image, generally speaking, again, on the exterior, we had some gray tones, so keeping those as sort of field color. But then how do we bring in, again, Lorraine blue as accents, and really in most of the public spaces, particularly that navy blue? And then as a means to warm, to warm things up, how do we use, our thought was to use a kind of patina color, which would then reference, you know, the base of the lighthouse structure. So that's from a paint perspective, and then thinking about even the casework, you know, the cabinetry and the various furnishings, we're also thinking in those same terms here, how do we use some warm colors and the grays and how can that play? And then always thinking about this patina as a sort of base element, and you'll see that in the images as we move forward. So this is the overall palette then. I don't know, Lindsay, you want to say anything?
Okay, well, basically, going off what you said, we bring in a lot of, starting with the Lorraine blue, we're bringing in a lot of influence in that, continuing on with a lot of the gray tones. And then that patina color really ties in, acts like our entire building. And that's, you'll see that through a lot of the finishes, both of, a lot of the paint accents, as well as the physical laminate and carpet accents.
And so going from, you know, again, the sort of palette image, then now to an overall floor plan, on the right, we see a general, again, this idea of a unified interior, gray tones with some warm accents. And then all the public and really sort of highly visible spaces, when you enter the building, the first thing you want to see, first floor is Lorraine blue. So that was our intention, was as a means to kind of really speak to the district tone or color. And then furthermore, then as a wayfinding mechanism, so as you go different floors, starting at the first floor, Lorraine blue, second floor, a little bit lighter blue, and then going up to the top. And we think about that, it's almost like thinking of the lake, if you're to take a cross-section of the lake and looking up through it, they have this kind of rising of lighter colors toward the top. Right here, we have, and just to kind of describe a little bit more detail how we're thinking about using those colors, this is a paint diagram, this is a little bit more detailed plan, Building A, Building B, and Building C. What we can see is, this is, of course, the administrative entry. So as you're walking from the visitor lot just to the east here, and you're to walk in the main door, what you'll see are these blue accent walls, both here near the elevator, as well as down the academic, or excuse me, athletic wing, and then, of course, by the administration desk as well. So really, you're confronted or presented with this district blue right away, so it's a primary feature. All the athletic areas, sorry, I'm really shaky, I think it's a distance thing, but, so the, all the blue areas in the athletic for varsity athletics and PE, as well as the main gymnasium hall, which we'll see. And then kind of working for the student dining, we're working in a little bit of the buff color to bring a brick inside. Once we get into Building B, what we'll see is, again, down the main corridors, a lot of use of that district blue, that Lorraine blue, and then accents of the patina color on the teaching walls. And again, this is a means to bring some warmth to the spaces, because with the blues and the grays, it tends to be a little more cold, our thought is to bring in some patina for warmth. As well as then on the west wing of the student, or the academic Building B, to use some of this, what's called, it's compatible, cream is the name of the color, but, you know, it's a buff color. And then finally, Building C here, as you'll see, again, down toward the auditorium, to have an overall sort of dark walls, as a means to not detract from presentations or any kind of activities or events that you'll have in there. And then how the chairs, you'll see that, how that we brought out the chairs, the colors of the chairs, fabrics and paints, to then work together in harmony. Second floor, this is just, and I'm going to just kind of walk you through before we get into the interior renderings. Second floor, similar type approach, but this is now where we see a little bit lighter blue in the main connecting corridors here. So this is that bridge that is under construction right now, you can see the media center space up here, where that's all enclosed. We have, you know, a lot of the use of that blue, so this is a little bit lighter tone, but that would be all on the second floor as you're walking through the corridors. So it's, again, a lot of blue is the primary feature to walk through. And then finally, on the third floor, which is, again, going up right now, you'll see that you have the steel seen out there right now, but one more lighter shade of blue as the final level. So that's kind of, are there any questions about paint, I guess, before I go and then start showing the renderings? So this is, again, an overall layout, as I said, the main visitor entry here, student entry to the student dining, and then the auditorium entry. So what we'd like to do is just kind of walk through the main spaces and show you some interior 3D, three-dimensional images of those. So, and then front door, as you're walking in, what we're, our intention is, again, to have a really strong presence of the district blue with the, you know, Titan store, as well as a, you know, welcome marquee. And then, actually, the signage here would then wrap around, so that, there's a big expansive glass on the first level, and you'll be able to see through kind of this blue wall as you're walking up to the door, and you'll see that, again, the district blue in there. And then, as we've mentioned, that patina color kind of on this base would be shown. In fact, we have the samples, I don't know if we have that.
We have physical boards of samples, is that easier?
Why don't you go through this, and then we can look at that. Okay.
And as Mike said, the patina actually occurs, it wraps around the base of the administrative desk, and we do have some interesting features of this desk. We're bringing in the same pattern as the master, the exterior and also throughout the building. And that actually is a special material, it's like a aluminum laminate, so that's something that's covered around what we normally typically do. So we have some specialty items, varying linnets, lighter colors, softet, and countertops, some light and some work in this space too.
So that's the, again, that's sort of main, main deal when you're walking in the front door.
We have some feature carpet in this space too, it might be worth mentioning, that the patina color is actually coming out through striping in the carpet, if you can tell a little bit through this image, in the feature areas, so to speak, we have this more elaborate carpet.
Well, we found a carpet that also brings up the sailing ship mass concept and the, kind of brings the precast texture on the north side of the gym into the, as a theme inside of the building. And that comes out in the student, here in the media center also.
So this, so this is looking, as Ed mentioned, in the media center, we've got the similar carpeting here with the accent lines, line pattern. The light fixtures themselves were also oriented, you know, on a diagonal, kind of in that same theme there. And this is a specialty, you know, bookshelf display unit, which would have, again, that patina color on it, but should be a pretty fun, you know, sort of sculpture piece in the middle, students can arrive, they can sort out, you know, whatever materials and that sort of thing.
And that's actually mobile, by the way. That cart can move around in different places in the library, make it a little bit unexpected so kids will, you know, look at the books on display there, you know, take a look at them, because it can move around.
Can I consider both as a secondary teaching surface, or a slide surface, or a work surface? So it's helpful uses for that, because that was really interesting, and really, um, great.
And then, yeah, the other thing to point out is, along the window wall here, we'll have a lot of nice seating areas, which, you know, with our furniture, so that's really a very tall glass wall, and so for those that have been able to walk out there, you know, from the second floor, you got a real nice view of the surrounding area, looking, you know, around the neighborhood, and it's a real, you know, beautiful panoramic view they have up here. That's admin and media center. Now we're moving on to the auditorium and music areas. So as I, as we mentioned, you know, we're looking at more of a sort of dark gray wall to not compete with any kind of stage events, but these are the refurbished chairs that are, you know, a big, big part of the, you know, as we identified tonight, the LFI, and this is a beautiful way to speak to the history of, you know, Lorraine schools, incorporation of the chairs, and... of the chairs. And so what we've done on the wall panels, we have these side, they're called acoustic wall panels, absorb, you know, they take the sound out of the room to help with acoustics. Basically, we're using a series of wood with a, I'll call it a cherry stain, which is the same as the armrest on the auditorium seats. So we're bringing that armrest wood into the back control booth area, the doors on the backside, as well as then the sidewall, they're basically fins, for lack of a better term, but these are a real representation of those masks, the inspiration of the design. But then the fabric, you have a lighter blue, and then a deeper blue that is, occurs in the fabric of the chair, so that's how we're kind of, you know, trying to title, I don't know, Lindsay, you want to add anything?
Well, the back wall is actually the same material, but it's not, I'd have to take away from the presentations, whatever's going on. As Mike said, we have matching blue tones on the walls, very similar, that's occurring on the seats. It's really, it's going to be a really nice space, I'm sure, very exciting to have.
What's the flooring going to look like in here?
It is a carpeting, for the area, isn't it? That's, I'm, that's.
Yeah, there's actually LED strip lights that go along those fins, that can be eliminated right before a performance, to give kind of a, you know, energetic appeal to the auditorium, kind of a night-like kind of event, you know, for us to, to an event right before, as we were coming in to sit down, and those will be on, you know, when the performance starts.
So then nearby, so this is the auditorium, it's kind of getting washed out, you can, but this thing down here represents the main music space, instructional space, just north of the auditorium. In many of the, I'll call them specialty classrooms, like the music, like the art room, and like the project classrooms, we're using the Lorraine blue as the accent wall, teacher wall. So the idea is to, again, kind of use that as our primary feature in the classroom, and then otherwise using a medium gray as the sort of field color, and then on the acoustic wall panels to bring in some white, and then some, just a subtle off shoot-up gray there. And then you also have, of course, some windows with some blue frames and things along those lines. And then we see a little bit of wrapping on the patina casework as well, so storage for music instruments and the like. Then student dining area. So this is, you can walk through here now, which is, it's pretty, you know, it's really kind of fun to do that, and I think one of the biggest things for us to just, as was identified, the plumbing that goes into that, we saw the sprinkler piping that goes through there, and it's just like the biggest sprinkler piping you've probably ever seen, but, you know, speaks to the size of the building. But in any case, what you see on the floor here is the, what will be the polished concrete floor. We have an image coming up here of what that looks like, a series of these, you know, suspended pendant light fixtures. We also have this little fin, which to us is a sense of a jetty or a break wall, if you will, kind of thought, we have this fin wall, a brick fin wall that comes in, and our thought was this is kind of a reference to the, like I say, like a break wall would be, and even the ceilings themselves are kind of like ripples, they cascade in height in a circular, curvilinear pattern, so it looks like waves kind of coming into the shore is the way the ceiling will work there. And then we have the acoustic wall panels on the upper side, that's just to keep noise down, but we have that alternating angle mask pattern there. This would be the view as you entered that student dining room, so you have a nice full wall of glass to your right, then you'll be able to see the school building, building B to the right there, and then, as I say, all the acoustic wall panels wrapping the upper piece, this is that break wall we were just talking about, and then these are like the waves basically coming up on the ceiling there. And then we have, you know, a logo, this Lorraine sword next to, because this, all this right here is a hall of fame, and we'll see that in a minute, but we have some display cases, and that's where you'd enter the gym. To just give a reference for the polished concrete that we're looking to do, there's a very high gloss, it's called a level three grind, which includes, I believe it's eight thousand, eight hundred or eight thousand? Eight thousand?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, excuse me, bit grit, and so it creates very high polish and then reflectivity of the surface, and it creates, takes the concrete down to about eighth inch aggregate exposure, so you actually see some of that, you know, components of the concrete in there, too. As Ed mentioned, it's, you know, getting to really a terrazzo appearance, of course, you know, here.
Oh, but, oh, look, compared to terrazzo, although does it got the same weight?
In terms of the polishing and how shiny it is? Yeah.
Well, it can be polished.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And especially for you to maintain it's.
Yeah, you don't have the waxing that you'd have with the VCT floor. A VCT was the base bid in the corridors. I think the student dining had a base bid for rubber tile, but the alternate got the terrazzo flooring, which avoids the constant re-waxing. And Lindsay did some research on the maintenance of it, you know, you can, you can re-buff the polished concrete floor, you won't have to do that as often as you would have to do with GCT, you know, every, yeah. It's a, plus chemicals and.
The terrazzo floor in the old Lorraine High School, looked as good at the time they
were in the mall, it was, it didn't open.
And the polish.
Yes, this is D7.
And then the polish, as far as polishing the painting, really a ton of traffic is used, I like this, I mentioned, you know, some of those areas, you can really just buff, react to the shine, you don't have to fully polish a whole area, so it's actually a.
Does this get coated every year? I mean, is it coated with anything, or is this just the way it is when, once it's put in?
You can put a sealer or polish on it.
But, you know, like every year, they open schools up, and you go in, and it looks really shiny, you know, I mean, it looks clean, and I think that's what you're, what you're going for in, in a school, I guess I'm saying.
A lot less maintenance than if you have.
Will it look clean, will it look like the floors do?
People have, very similar to the experience of their first day in here, is that shine, with polish, I mean, a light buff will keep it looking, just as maybe a little bit. Additional polish goes can get by, but like I said, really, it really depends on this. Most of what you clean it with, the neutral cage cleaner is.
Have you ever did a facility with a concrete floor like this?
We personally haven't, but the firm we're partnering with, Clark &amp; Post, the local firm, they have, they have that experience with it. And this is being used quite a bit in facilities built recently, so I think there's some track record of performance on this. Again, it's, it's not terrazzo, it's not, you know, it's not quite terrazzo, the permanence of that, but it's not VCT, which is constant maintenance, so it's, it's really in the middle, I think, on the sweet spot of maintenance and longevity. I think this is a good, good fit for, for the school.
And actually, too, it was used locally on one of the learning community college facilities, and I forget the street exit, but then you recognize it's a building with the sort of fence on the, on the top of it, the screen wall on the top of it, but there's, you know, a lot of exposed.
At our community college?
At the Lorraine Community College.
They used this?
They did, yeah, they had, you know, also colored concrete in there as well.
And the contractor did a very nice job putting it down, the Mary Conchance system putting it down.
I noticed the cuts, the cuts in the, in the, not the auditorium, but the lunchroom?
Right.
The way it was cut, is that the way it's going to look, it's going to be cut?
Yes.
You have to, it's cut.
Yes, you definitely have to have cuts to control cracking, because that's the nature of concrete, is the cracks.
I mean, it looks.
And the idea is to control that with the.
It looks nice.
We think it'll look beautiful. Well, I guess let's try to move it along, there's probably other things on the agenda, we want to get, we want to be able to see the finishes, try to run through the rest of the slides.
All right, so, restaurant, this is right next to the student dining room, we've got, again, some gray tones with the patina accent. Gymnasium, athletic, you know, this is, of course, fully closed in now, and as Dana and Jeff mentioned, you know, it's getting, you know, painted and ready, you know, for the different paints. So this would be the main wall, sort of, as far as, you know, using the district blue, we have a little video area here up top, these are acoustic wall panels along the sides. This, we got the home leaders here, with the, you know, Titans written in, this is what we're looking at in terms of the use of this sort of logo pointing toward the visitors, and then, you know, duckwork sort of accented up within the white ceiling area. I think a big kind of question mark we wanted to, you know, get some way in on was, what we have here are two options, basically. On the left is option one, and on the left is, or excuse me, right is option two. The differences are as follows, option one has both the same color of a, like a darker gray bleacher with lighter gray Titans written in it, and a lighter gray, basically to use the same field gray on three walls. Option two, the difference is that you could use two different bleacher colors, so more like a sword logo where you'd have blue and gray, and then blue and gray, basically. And then potentially, this is, doesn't have to go with that scheme, but this would be a darker gray wall on that side, so I think it's, and then, as Ed pointed out, too, we've got the flag, you know, that'd be the location of it, on the home side there, on the scoreboard.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss this with Jeff to get a decision, but, you know, basically the idea was to either try to stick directly with the sword logo, with the blue and the gray, on each side of the gym, and it would reverse itself depending on which side of the gym you're looking at. And the other scheme was, you know, a little bit of a break from that, but we can, we can decide on that later, we just wanted to show you the two concepts for that.
And then the, this is the paint striping plan of the gym, just like you saw in the rendering here, main gym, north, south, and auxiliary, east, west.
Press boxes to your left there.
And then divider curtain. These would be the scoreboards, primary on the south wall, and then.
Two more? Yeah, three, three will have the, just the LHS, and one will have the home of the type in the main gym.
And then to a typical classroom, as we saw on the exterior, we had three different colored windows and carpet all on the inside, so our carpet was meant to kind of play off what's happening on the windows, and then the patina color for the teaching wall, which is short door protector on that area. That would be in the main area of building B, and then finally, on the edge of it, we have the credit recovery area, so to kind of create a different identity, we're going with this sort of buff color to match the brick as the teaching wall accent in those cases.
Credit recovery is the west end of building B.
And then this would be a shot down the corridor, with the idea, again, of a Lorraine blue walls and a light, light gray locker, bright white ceilings, and then the polished concrete, not, not the terrazzo version, but a little bit of a lesser grind, but, you know, again, the low maintenance concept, right, so.
And then the, just touching on that, the pink color, if you remember, earlier in the presentation, we were showing the darker blue, which would be on the first floor, the second and the third floors would be whiter for the second floor. Hold it for you, Tom.
Want to go into, we can hold up maybe the actual finishes themselves, we have them all with us.
Yeah, okay.
So this is an overview of the, sorry, the administrator and the media center, both sharing the same accent carpet. The casework and the desks would be, you know, what actually in itself has, starting very similar to the masks, so it's actually really, it shows that building, with the lighter color and then the accent, with the darker charcoal.
What are those, what are those used for, the lighter accent and the charcoal colors? What is that going to be on in the building?
The desk, the reception desk. This will be.
That's every one.
Remember for a minute.
Yes.
And then, just to mention, in the administrator reception desk, we'd use a powder house over, and then, these would be the accents set in on the desk. I think we're going to be a part of this, too. The media center desk would be very similar.
Play a man. That holds right.
Where's Bob Parker?
Put that in the paper, I want to see those people in the paper to mark.
So this is the difference, so two carpets within the media center, the red and the gold stripe, which is off from the administration, and then the secondary, is it within the same line?
I like it, I guess I would have really loved it if I would have saw that orange was like scarlet. Sorry, sorry, that was a bad, I couldn't understand that.
That's side, this shows, we have a training room, scoring, two laundry rooms, lefty and righty, the wall color is really prominent, but Lorraine school spirit in that. Corridor showing the three different colors and the lighter gray lockers, then this would be the first floor, second floor, third floor, respectively, pink colors. Student dining, this is the compatible cream, as Mike mentioned, from the accents. This patina color is in the surgery, as you walk in, you drink the food.
Don't encourage.
These are the wall panel colors, and same with the gymnasium, this is for that, these are the options for the ceiling. Restaurants.
One more time.
In the restaurants, we've got two floors, a separation of these floors, that's the line of softet on the ceiling. The wall covering would be the divider, upper panel, so divides the staff dining and the restaurant, and then the accent, the pink color here as well.
The center gray piece that we have there, is that just, is that the paint, or is that what?
It's a wall cover, yeah.
It's a wall cover.
There's an upper partition wall, where you can eat, staff dining, and the restaurant. That'll be closed off when they want, when you want. I guess the space would be a little bit larger, but that will be the material on the, it's a little bit more durable, that's the texture to it.
Show the crowd, show the camera.
The carpeting, the seats, these are the three colors on the sidewalls, and then the back wall, which is the darker.
And they've been, they've talked with all of us for the CNN.
Special stage seating, correct.
Just come here.
The classroom is pretty similar to some of the other countries we came, the casework would be the upper cabinets, would be the lower cabinets, and then the, kind of that's, the accent color within the main classroom, and then the credit recovery is the cream. Science, we have the CTE, so we have the patterning, same patterning that we have with carpet, we have some science rooms like that, just being the main.
The science rooms are, one of the spaces that remain VCT. Be a little bit of maintenance in there, but not that many.
What does VCT stand for?
Vinyl composition tile, it's the one-by-one, one-by-one foot tile.
Get edge of my kid. You know what the guy says in the graduate class?
So these, we're going to leave these here with you, these boards, so you can look at them at your leisure, and that's, that's pretty much our presentation, right? We're all finished and.
Gentlemen and ladies, I have something I want to show you. Thank you. It's above board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's not wrong.
That's, that's why.
First hearing of the public. And I need a motion to approve or amend the minutes for the organizational meeting held on January 12th and our regular meeting held on that same day.
Motion to approve organizational minutes and regular meetings minutes.
Roll call.
Mr. Palace?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
I was, we, approving minutes?
Yes.
I was not in attendance, so I will abstain.
And Mr. Demakia?
I believe, hearing of the public, we have a second one coming up. Any old business? Important recommendations of the treasury.
Need a motion to approve items A. Need a motion to approve items eight oh one to eight oh three. Motion to approve treasurer's recommendations, items eight oh one through eight oh three.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes. Important recommendations of superintendent.
Got a number of things to report tonight. First, the Longfellow Airmark team received the highest, art-conducted QA food score for quarter one. The overall average of the food safety food measure was ninety-four percent, which was the highest in the state of Ohio for Airmark, which is, which is really good. On that same school, our robotics team has won a number of competitions. They will be at a board meeting, and I believe they're doing a demonstration tonight at school, so that's why they're not here. But they have done extremely well. It's Deb Hanson, and they'll have a presentation coming, coming up on that, in one of our future meetings. LaValle Ritchie, she's a teacher at Stephen Dohanas, was awarded a Explorer Learning Reflex Grant, and that would be a revolutionary math fact fluency program that she's going to be doing for next year. We had a community connectors meeting with a number of local agencies, of which we will hope to partner. That's one of the governor's grants to connect, the grant does not belong to the school, it belongs to the agencies, and it's to connect partnerships to help students in a mentoring system. And you'll hear more of that because the due date on that is coming up in March. We've also signed on to partner with Boys and Girls Club and the Verizon Centers to twenty-first century grant applications. Boys and Girls Club has been a partner on that for quite a while, and we're looking to continue that and expand that coming up. If you've been keeping tabs with the paper, the governor's budget is coming out, and we've got a long legislative process, so don't, don't get excited yet, because it won't be completed until June. But because of the governor's funding, he funded the school districts based upon ability for communities to pay. And while there's debate on that, and it's, there's a lot to come, more to come, Lorraine fared very, very well in the budget. We were, we were very much at the top of the ability not to pay, so we are looking at getting, if we get what he recommended, we will be capped next year, which is projected to be over seven million dollars, but we'll see where that ends up. Second year to get six million dollars. And with our enrollment being where it is, we're looking to be in a pretty good shape financially, maybe for the first time in many, many years. With that being said, if the governor's budget comes through even near to what it is, and the enrollment holds near to what it is, I'm going to restore all the art and music programs, and you'll get those recommendations very quickly. I'm restoring all the sports programs that we had prior to the cutbacks on that. We'll be eliminating the split classes at the elementary schools. And I've also told my principals to start thinking about club and activities and restoring those, not necessarily bringing back what we have, but what students are interested in, and that would be the elementary, junior high, and high school. Don't ask me a lot of questions, because there's a whole lot of things budgetary that needs to go on. Dale has to do his revised five-year forecast, because the money's not there yet. There's a lot of districts that lost money, and those legislators will be working for their districts also. But Lorraine has been a, has been a recipient, and because of the work that everyone's done in the district, holding the enrollment steady, we're looking to be on a good financial setting at this, at this point.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
The items you just mentioned in terms of restoration, would that be effective with the fifteen, sixteen school year?
We will not get any of this money until next year, and we will, and right now, we're still being paid on last year's budget. They have not adjusted. In the past, they've usually adjusted based on our enrollment in January. They went to a new system this year, and we're almost in March, and we're still being paid on, okay, this is, I'm going to have to think, thirteen, fourteen money. So we're still waiting. And, and once we get that information, and we're fairly certain it's there, because what we don't want to do is put it in, and then in June, they say, oh, by the way, you don't get the money. But at this point, I've told folks to prepare for it, be ready to go, and the first indication we have, you'll have that back in front of you. It's been a long time coming. We've been very fiscally prudent with some of the ups and downs that we've had, and what this, what this could possibly mean for the board is we would not have to go to the voters for new money. We would have the renewal coming up, which, which you've talked about in the past, but we would not have to go for new money, which is, which is huge if we, if we hold the cost and do everything we need to do, and we be fiscally responsible like we have been. Thank you. Okay, under recommendations of the superintendent, as for approval of nine point oh one, staff resignations and retirements are still coming in. Nine point oh two, this is the spring supplementals coming in. Nine point oh three, this is some tutors that we replace periodically. Nine point oh four, approval of support staff. We are replacing some safety officers that have retired and resigned. We're also adding a few, so we get ready for the new high school and get some training in. We've been very fortunate in some of our hirings lately to really ramp up our diversity. Approval of administrative staff, as you approved earlier, Maria Sanchez is retiring at the end of this month, and I'm recommending that Marie Deschek, who has been in that building, and a longtime employee of the district, and also is bilingual, to be an intern there, and hopefully then we'll continue on in the, in the future. Nine point oh six, approval of supplemental contracts for the non-cert, these are the spring sports again. Nine point oh seven, leave of absences is listed. And nine point oh eight, this is part of a, my college, just the job description at this point for liaison between the college and us, as we ramp up that my, my, my university liaison position. So I ask for approval of nine point oh one through nine point oh eight.
I would like, if we could, make it a motion for nine point oh one through nine point oh eight, excluding nine point oh seven.
Oh, sorry. Motion to approve items nine point oh one through nine point oh eight, excluding item nine point oh seven.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
I ask for approval of nine point oh seven.
Motion to approve item nine point oh seven.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I abstain, I have a relative on that list.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Operation Matters ten point oh one, this is our approval of the fifteen, sixteen calendar, and tentative sixteen, seventeen, this goes through all the calendar committee, and we've, we've done all the process there. There's no surprise, it's very, very similar to this year's. Ten point oh three, revising the contract with the ESC as per the treasurer's recommendation. Ten point oh four, reimbursement for the police department for the security for the site during our Christmas break. Ten point oh five, approval of agreement with Rachel Witzing Associates, this is for some consultation as far as part of the commission report. Ten point oh six, contract with Michelle Jackbowski, and this is for a family presentation as part of our Title I for the Garfield Literacy. Ten point oh seven, contract with Music Theater International, this is part of the musical that we'll be doing. Ten point oh eight, contract for the International Services Center, this is the interpreter services that we have for our students. And ten point oh nine, approval of a contract to provide security for Lorraine High School Dance. So I ask for approval of ten point oh one through ten point oh nine.
Motion to approve ten point oh one through ten point oh nine.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Next is our approval of the adoption for this month, for Black History Month. It's eleven point oh one, eleven point oh two, approval of adoption of National Nutrition Month Resolution, and eleven point oh three, approval of adoption of National School Breakfast Week Resolution, as written.
So move. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Now that we've done that, I've got a couple of interesting little items here that I'd like to do, that Mr. Hawkes has put together for us. Many times, people think this is a small operation. Snow plowing, we've completed two hundred and thirty-seven hours of snow plowing. Work orders, as you know, we went to a paperless system, we've had eight hundred ninety-three work orders under the paperless, and two hundred and five are the old system, we're getting there. Of our tickets to repair our technician, we've had two thousand nine hundred and five, of which we've fixed two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five, only sixty-eight left. As you know, the PUP tests and the new state tests are coming, so we've had to make copies. We've made four million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and three copies of black and white paper, and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seven copies of colored paper. Of our student attendance, we've had, as part of our security officers, our safety officers, complete seven hundred and six, or six hundred and seventy-one home visits, two hundred and fifty-three conferences. We've had one hundred and thirteen building safety checks. On our transportation, we drive two thousand and seventy-one miles every day, that's like the Florida back. We have approximately two thousand five hundred riders, and that's, that's a lot of miles. We serve three hu, this is through the month of January, we serve three hundred and ninety-seven thousand breakfasts and five thousand eight hundred and twelve lunches, for a total of almost nine hundred thousand meals through this, through this time. And that's, that's our operation piece, you know, in addition to teaching students to read. We have a huge operation, and hats off to those folks that do those programs, and they do it really well. I just want to give them a, when I got these results, I think the board needs to know, almost a million meals by January, that's, that's a lot of meals, and that's a lot of driving, every day transporting all the students. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot of meals. New business.
I just have, I have a request to the president and/or the superintendent. Really appreciate the efforts of the Lorraine Veterans Council on providing the school district with the American flag. So I respectfully request that we put some proclamation or a thank you letter together to give to that organization. Thank you.
I have another item that I just thought about, as they were doing a presentation, it's kind of old business and new business. We had once discussed creating a schedule that we would create as it relates to naming rights and different things, and we're kind of getting to these phases where we see things coming to fruition, and it probably will be a good time. I don't know if it was a committee or how we did that, but if we can probably reengage in that. Now that we have pictures, we have waltzes, we can begin to probably solicit folks who might be very interested in the festival.
That's a very good point, Mr. Williams. Part of the plaques, we just had that discussion last week, where the plaques, the different classrooms and everything will have this section for exactly what you're speaking in, and I appreciate that, we need to sort out that.
I would suggest, and I agree on that, that people like to give money for a couple of reasons. Tax deduction is not a major one. People think it is, it isn't. People give because they want to be part of something bigger than themselves, and they want some way for their name to be remembered, to form a legacy. So I would recommend that we strongly consider working with the endowment board and the Community Foundation of Lorraine County, and not ask for someone just to give money that the board can have control over, but give it in the form of an endowment. Our endowment fund is currently in excess of two million dollars, which frees up a good bit of money every year for grants, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, teachers write grants. I think, for instance, the auditorium. I believe it was Mel Mixon in Elyria from Invacare, that he made a large amount of money for the auditorium. Well, we might be able to do that, but donors are much more interested in seeing their money last, and one of the advantages of endowment funds is that the money is never spent. Because you gave money in nineteen ninety to the Lorraine Community Foundation, or, and to the school endowment, that money's still there. The only thing that comes out of that money is a small amount for business expense to the foundation, Community Foundation. But that money's there, and your name is always connected with that money. And I think that's very appealing when you go to a donor. The first director of the Lorraine County Community Foundation was, and this was all Nordson that formed this, was a fellow by the name of Jeb Carroll. I don't know if you remember him, Tony, or not, but Tony, he was the first community fund, the Lorraine Community, County Community Foundation was formed by the Nordson Corporation, paid for all of that. And I met with, long after he'd retired, and Jeb is the one that said, for years, he always thought tax deductions, et cetera, uh-uh. It's a legacy, and it's having your name connected to something bigger than you. And one way I think we can attract big dollars is to go to donors and say, we're not, this is going to give you a naming right in the high school, and you set a schedule, that's why you have to work with some others. Is Chris Smith still with TDA?
Yes, he's the part owner of the...
Okay, Chris, early on, when we were still meeting with the Facilities Committee, TDA has worked with districts to do just that. And I think we would want to get the folks maybe that were here tonight involved, and really go out and sell this thing, and who knows, we could raise two, three, four, five million bucks. And the money's out there, believe me. And if you go to a company like US Steel, you don't go looking for twenty thousand dollars, they won't even listen to you. Go look for two million, you probably get there here. So that, I agree with Mr. Williams, that should be pursued.
Is that something that we should engage in through the Facilities Committee, and...
Well, I think, I think the board should either form a committee to investigate that? We already have an endowment board. And are you going to serve on that this year, Mr. Demakia?
What's that, the endowment board?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so, because the endowment board is not controlled by the school district. And the board gets one seat, and Mr. Tucker, you're also on that committee. We should talk to Brian Frederick or somebody out at the Community Foundation, and really put together a campaign. Because when spring gets here, you want to take donors on a trip and impress them, and then say, you know, my brother, who's been a longtime insurance agent, had a client come to him, she was seventy-eight years old. She has since passed away. She went to my brother, who's an insurance agent, and bought a one million dollar whole life insurance policy. He would not tell me, Tony, what his commission was. And gave it to the Community Foundation, and paid the premium. By doing that, the premium became a tax deduction. She died about five years later, and the Community Foundation got a million bucks, and every year, every year, scholarships and other things are donated in her name, and there will always be that. And that's what the appeal we have with that building is all.
We'll work on that, we'll figure that out. Thank you. Committee reports and requests from board members.
I'm going to make, if I may, make a preliminary legislative report, sort of building on Mr. Tucker, was told someone had funded already. Just so you're aware, the budget bill now has been entered into the House. The one hundred and thirty-first Ohio General Assembly is now in session. There are seventeen bills before the General Assembly, that would have some effect on schools. House Bill sixty-four was entered yesterday, and that is the biennial budget as proposed. In a communication today from Ohio School Boards Association, they said, don't expect finalization to that budget until June, probably the end of June. There are, the budget has two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three pages, you can read it online if you're, have a lot of time. Four hundred and thirty-two of those pages are dedicated to education. Four hundred and thirty-two of those pages are dedicated to education, and under the present form, under the present proposal, as Mr. Tucker said, the budget is being, uh, Governor Kasich looked at a district's capability to pay, and then increased or decreased state funding based on that. I have, uh, there was a table online that lists school districts in order of, in their capacity to pay. Those with the lowest capacity would be one, that's Youngstown. We are seven. Basically, we're the seventh poor, poorest school district in the state, and if that budget were to stay in place, we would, over the two-year period, that would be the twenty fifteen, sixteen school year, the twenty sixteen, seventeen school year, we would see an increase in state funding based on, as Mr. Tucker said, enrollment being stabilized, other things, of fourteen point two million dollars. Where it will end up, I don't know, but there is something we can all do about it. Fortunately for us, Representative Dan Ramos is on the Finance Committee, along with about thirty other members of the House. So if you happen to be talking to him or see him, put a plug in for us. Of those seventeen bills, one was passed by the House yesterday. That would be, um, House Bill seven. And I don't know, Mr. Tucker, it just looks like another... Are you familiar with the bill?
I wait for the regulations.
Well, the bill will put restrictions on school districts in using sti, elementary and middle school test scores, in promoting or retaining students or granting course credit. Now, I don't know where it go, if it goes to the Senate next, goes to the governor for signature, it has not been enacted, but... I don't know. I mean, there was a story in the paper today about parents not wanting to get some big things. So now apparently, if this bill passes, test scores from the present school year, the fourteen, fifteen school year, test scores, districts will be restricted from using those scores to retain a student, to promote a student, or to give class credit for a course, course credit. So... We're all lucky that the assembly's in, in session. God knows what they'll do. Seriously, if you do know Danny, put a plug in for us. He's one voice out of many, but I know he'll advocate for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Second hearing in the public.
Uh, my name's Eric Twakla. I'm a past employee of Lorraine City Schools and a community member, and I came to voice of concern over some things. Um, I'm actually considering a future school board run, and I've been talking to some employees and some people in the community about, uh, some things that maybe were distressing and problematic in the school, and one thing I hear over and over again is, uh, an ESL position, uh, well, two ESL positions that have, uh, basically, the funding for those positions have run out, and the cost of the district is approximately three hundred thousand dollars per year for these two positions, and, uh, now it's coming out of the general fund, and, um, you know, the question is, is the need for these two positions. There are a senior executive director for teaching and learning, and then an associate, uh, position that is affiliated with that. I guess one person reports into the high school and middle school, and the other one's more elementary, but, uh, nobody can seem, you know, I, I don't think it's responsible spending to continue to spend three hundred thousand on a program that was supposed to be funded by an outside organization. I've heard that Elyria Schools had a similar position, and when the funding ran out, they just stopped the position, and here we're keeping this on for a cost of three hundred thousand per year. Now, my facts may not be a hundred percent accurate, but, uh, it's concerning, and I just wanted to bring that up to the school board as a concerned citizen.
You live in the school district?
Yes, I do.
Filing deadline, obviously.
Okay.
The board's here.
All right. Okay, thank you.
We do need to go into an executive session under employment.
Well, would be, would be... There's no action going to resolve, is there, Mr. President?
What's that?
There'll be no action resolving.
No action, uh, resolving, uh, but we do need to go in for A two, four, and C. So I do...
We have litigation as well.
That's, that's C, that's C, I got it. So I need a motion to go into executive session for A two, employment, four, discipline, and C, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are a subject to pending or imminent court action. And before we get to motion, uh, might as well do the next regular scheduled board meeting will be March second, six-thirty, right here. Room ten, Charleston Administration Center. So with that being said, I do need that motion for executive session.
Motion to go into executive session under A two, four, C. Do we have a second?
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.
To purchase a high-quality copy of the program you just viewed, please call Lorraine City Schools Television at two eight two eighty-four hundred.